And we will call to order the Program and Personnel Committee meeting of Community High School District 128. I invite everybody to stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, quick agenda review. We're going to start off with an invitation for public comment, and then we will move into items for discussion, which includes an equity policy update, as well as board policies for review and monitoring and a first reading. We'll review educational chores that will be taking action, we'll be taking action on them at the end of the month at our regular board meeting, as well as employment of employees. Then we will discuss future agenda items, and I will turn it over to Jim for our FNF committee meeting. So at this time, I would like to invite Marnie Navarro for public comment.
Good evening. My name is Marnie Navarro, lifelong Libertyville resident and proud District 70 and District 128 graduate, parent of a current District 76th grader and future District 128 student. I speak for myself. I note that on tonight's agenda is the Equity Policy Board update. Slated presentation at the next full board meeting on September 23rd is the Equity Policy Update on Inclusive Curriculum, Culturally Responsive Pedagogy, and Anti-Racist Education. Although Denise Herman is now gone from the superintendent position at District 128, golden parachute in hand, blessed by Board of Education President Lisa Hessel, Mr. Carmichael, Ms. Benjamin, and Ms. Badson, her bad policies and hires, which are inapplicable to our actual constituency and needs, remain in place and in force at District 128 at great cost to our taxpayers. We, as a district, have only 3,000 students with declining enrollment and projected future decline. We have $100 million annual budget, spend $28,000 a year per student, per year. Our property taxes are among the highest in the state and the nation. Unlike our peer districts, we have no established and operational MTSS in place, only having started to draft a plan this past March. We have no standardized credible grading system in place across campuses and subjects. Many of our students have real and lingering deficiencies remaining from the COVID school shutdown, and lack executive functioning skills, time management, and study and test-taking skills. The 20% of our students with IEPs are among the most underserved and underfunded subpopulation, rather than any alleged and narrowly-defined racial minority. In fact, our special education practices are not in compliance at District 128 and need updating. This 20% population should be included, but is not, in District 128's equity work. They are considered in the same category on state report cards, and their data is similar to our other much-less-populous identified underperformers. By tonight's presentation stats, only 1% of Libertyville High School students and 1% of Vernon Hills students are African-American, and we have 3% African-American staff. The number of Native Americans in our student body is too low to report. The district's student body is 12% Hispanic, and 7% staff is Hispanic. Query then why District 128, under Denise Herman, added three new six-figure administrative hires in her short three-year tenure, including a full-time Director of Equity and Inclusion for a district of under 3,000 students at a cost of $212,000 salary and benefits per year, totaling $636,000 over three-year contract, plus two full-time equity coaches at a cost of $200,000 a year. FOIA documents also reflect that's not the end of it. There's also considerable spend on outside consultants relating to DEI and EOS, including $88,000 in EOS, $3,500 a day on EOS consultant Tony Frontier, $14,000 to Creative Conversations, $19,000 to systemic educational equity. This community received our property tax assessments this week. I don't know about the rest of you, but mine is up 8.5%. Many people in this community are hurting.
Marnie, that's three minutes.
Okay, I'm wrapping it up. Thank you. As a single mom, I can tell you that our salaries are not remotely keeping pace with the increased cost of living, including our property taxes, a whopping 77% of which go to our schools. I would urge this board to please consider how you're spending our hard-earned tax dollars. This is not the DEI policy of a district with our demographics and our... Here. There are much higher priorities that would help all of our students-
Please wrap it up.
-equity for all, including building a robust operational MTSS system that is much-needed and over-derepaired at LHS. We expect and demand you to be sound fiscal stewards of our hard-earned tax dollars. Thank you.
Would anybody else like to address the board this evening? Okay, seeing none, we are going to move on to our items for discussion. Item A is our Equity Policy Update. I will turn it over to Mr. Varne.
Good evening. This evening, we'll be reviewing our Racial Diversity Equity and Policy 7.12, giving an update on two commitments this evening. Remember that this year, we will be meeting with you more regularly to provide a more comprehensive update on each commitment annually. With Commitment 2, we're looking at our diverse staffing, and this commitment within the policy really speaks to the district's intentional efforts to recruit, hire, and retain diverse staff. We realize that diversity can come in many forms, and that may include gender, religion, sexuality, et cetera. We honor the rich tapestry of diversity within D128. However, this policy asks the district to pay particular attention to the race and ethnicity of our staff, with the focus being to have a workforce whose ethnical diversity mirrors that of the student body and local population of Lake County. This year, for the 24-25 school year, we hired 22 certified staff members. It is always the district's first priority to hire highly-qualified staff and bring the best talent to the district. At the core of Commitment 2 is to ensure that candidates of color get a fair opportunity to demonstrate their potential to meet the needs of the district. This year, the progression of candidates by race through our hiring process has improved from last year. Last year, the district shared its findings with the board that African-American candidates were less likely to advance beyond the application stage of our hiring process. With the implementation of more inclusive hiring practices and anti-bias training conducted by our HR department and the Office of Equity and Inclusion, we can report that more of our African-American applicants did advance to higher levels of our application and hiring screenings. We still recognize that none of these applicants were selected for employment. We recognize also a decrease this year in Hispanic hires. We would like to mention that we experienced a 41% decrease in Hispanic applicants this year, which may be a reason why there was a decrease in hires. With the exception of our Hispanic applicants, the district was successful in recruiting more Asian and Black applicants than we had in last year's report. Of the 22 hires for certified staff members, here's a racial breakdown. I would like to remind the board that last year, a priority for the district that we reported out was to hire more extremely talented Asian-identifying staff. This priority came from our findings that the largest gap between our student and staff population existed among our Asian group. In terms of retention of staff of color, we can look both at our certified and non-certified personnel. This year, the district has the most Asian and Hispanic employees compared to the last two years. Our African-American retention is an area that the district is paying particular attention to this year. Our HR department conducts exit interviews to determine trends that can be addressed in order to retain our staff of color. Additionally, our Staff of Color affinity group also serves as a focus group to identify the needs of our BIPOC staff. This chart displays the incremental changes that have occurred over time as it relates to our staff diversity since we started this tracking of this particular metric in the policy in 2022, 2023. This year, our actions, we will continue to implement more inclusive hiring practices. Last year was the implementation of our inclusive hiring practice developed by Mr. Brian Kelly and the HR department. This was also our first year of utilizing PowerSchool to track and monitor the progress of applications. We will also continue to support our staff affinity groups and provide opportunities for mentorship for all new employees and networking opportunities for our staff of color, including sending staff members to the National Alliance of Black School Educators Conference for this school year. We're also providing targeted recruitment efforts to attract applicants of diverse backgrounds. We are relying on our current staff to promote grassroots recruiting efforts by asking them to bring their friends and colleagues from other districts to our district to fill any vacancies that we will have. We also will continue to collect feedback and provide evaluation to any information that we receive from exit interviews and from our focus groups. We do anticipate this year having a large retirement class and having to fill a number of anticipated vacancies this year. So our diversity efforts will be important as we continue this work. The second commitment that we're focusing on tonight is our Equity-Focused Professional Learning. Commitment 10, within our policy, highlights the need for our faculty and staff to participate in Equity-Focused Professional Learning. This year, we have put together a catalog of offerings for our staff that we're continuing to develop as it is in draft form. But within this catalog, we're highlighting all of the opportunities that our staff members have to participate in Equity-Focused Professional Learning. I'd like to highlight some of the new offerings that we'll be having for this year for the first time. One is a focus in our Institute Days. Our Institute Days will focus our staff on exploring effective Tier 1 instructional strategies, as well as promoting belief and belonging in the classroom. These areas will allow teachers to be better prepared to differentiate for the various needs of students in their classrooms, regardless of race or ability. We also will be hosting Equity Professional Learning Continuum. This is a voluntary effort and a three-year commitment by our staff members. The first year, we have approximately 10 staff members already signed up to participate in the journey. It will provide opportunities for self-reflection and engaging in challenging conversations with one another. The members of Cohort 1 will continue as a cohort for the next three years, and next year, we will add Cohorts 2, and the following year, Cohort 3. And the cycle will continue to move forward. Also this year, we are adding a series on teaching and maintaining civil discourse. We want to ensure that our staff are well-equipped to navigate polarizing topics in conversation as we have witnessed global issues across our previous years where our students and community were impacted by conflicts globally. We also want to look at our national events that may be causing some polarizing conversations within our classrooms between our students, and we want our teachers and staff to be able to support students in having those conversations in a productive way. Lastly, we are working to support our diagonal movers through our workshop series in partnership with Equal Opportunity Schools. Our D128 staff will design these interactive and dynamic workshops to equip educators with strategies and tools needed to create belonging-rich spaces that support the academic, social, and emotional well-being of all students. Thank you.
Any questions?
A question, maybe more like a comment. Back to the recruiting part of this, in an attempt to recruit educators that represent the population that exists here in our district, has there been any work or consideration for work in recruiting our own students who, from here, go on to an education program and an attempt to bring them back home and become teachers in this community?
Jim, that's a good question. You know, I don't have the current numbers on staff that have graduated from Libertyville and Vernon Hills, but we do have, you know, quite a few that come back, you know, to teach in their own community. You know, one of the things, too, when you look at exploring multiple pathways, one of the opportunities is a pathway for education, try to grow your own. And so I think, you know, there are some upcoming opportunities for us to look at, trying to grow the educator profession. I think, you know, with the numbers of teachers, that's something that we need to keep diving into and looking at.
Yeah, that seems to be a trend in a lot of districts, especially those with high levels of underrepresented populations going, and those students going on into the education world, might as well, you know, try to encourage them to come back and help out their own community. So, thank you. That was it.
Larry, I just wanted to express my appreciation for your presentation. It really underscores my own thoughts and prioritization with regard to diversity, equity, and inclusion within our community. And as someone who is a religious minority individual, I've felt what it feels like to be the only in a school, both as a student and as a teacher, and it's not a great feeling. And it may not be evident to a large number of people in our community just how important this kind of work is, but it's really important work. It's critical, and it helps us progress to new levels of acceptance and tolerance on a larger scale. So thank you for doing the work you're doing. Thank you for this update, and I look forward to hearing more.
Can I ask a question about PD? If I recall, we've had Equity Coordinators at the building level since 2019. Is that correct? The voluntary training that exists is... Do you have a sense of how many people are participating in the current cohort?
The current cohort for the continuum?
Mm-hmm.
There are 10 in that cohort, but this is the first year that we've had that. We'll be having that cohort running.
Okay. And the PD that you mentioned about navigating difficult conversations, the civil discourse, is that also voluntary?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, there's a number of different professional learning opportunities offered throughout the year. So Larry, in his role as our Director of Equity and our Equity Coaches, they sit on the larger teaching and learning team, and what we do is there are some workshops that might be directly related to topics around race, inclusion, measures of people's identity, and ways to work effectively with that in a diverse school setting. But then other teaching and learning workshops, there is an equity focus as well, so that we have that perspective as we work with all students across our district.
And our mandatory training for this year will come through our Institute Days, which are focused on our promoting belief and belonging and our Tier 1 instructional strategies. That will extend beyond just supporting underrepresented students by race, but will support all students at all levels, our diagonal movers, our students who would have been classified as striving learners. And we will also continue to have our mandatory identifying microaggressions and addressing microaggressions for new staff. So our staff will continue to have that.
Thank you. What other questions do we have? Okay. Moving on, we have board policies for review and monitoring. We will turn that over to Brian.
So for the first accession item is on board policies for review and monitoring. And again, according, going back to Board Policy 240, Board Policy Development, that the board will periodically review its policies for relevancy and monitor the policies for effectiveness and consider any modifications required. If you remember back before we updated our Press Plus, to Press Plus, and reviewed all of our policies, we had a system in place that I would bring sections to you of the different board policies to review and ask questions. Part of our subscription now, there'll be a cycle of policies for you, the board, to review. And so this, again, will replace our previous review and monitoring timelines, which I called it, that was implemented. So this first batch, you know, from Press, and part of this, too, is that you'll, we'll present them at P&amp;P committee meetings, and then you'll actually vote, kind of adopt them again at the board meeting, and then that date will be updated so that we can also monitor when the last time board policies were reviewed by you. So this, again, will be set in place by Press Plus and our subscription.
So we're going to adopt their cycle of review?
Correct. And then you'll have, and so none of these change language at all. So all the, you know, this group, there's no changes in languages, no changes made to it. Then when we have changes that will be made, you'll have a first reading and a second reading. So that is Item C for discussion, the first reading. That's the difference.
So for Item B, just as a review, and for some that may not have been here when we, way back when we first started this process, it was a way, you know, it's hard to sit down and read through all the policies all at once. So we broke them up into chunks and just sort of had the expectation that we would take a look at every policy eventually over a period of several years. And so this is sort of taking that to the next level and sort of expecting us to not only look at a handful of policies, a group of policies, every so many months, every year, but to also just sort of, yeah, acknowledge they're still okay. I think this also comes from some of the policies that, when you look at some of the policies, it's like, this hasn't been changed in, you know, 20 years. And should it, or should it not, or is it still good? And so unless there was, in prior years, unless there was a reason to change the policy, many of them just sat unchanged for many years. So this just sort of takes the responsibility, gives us the responsibility to at least look at them, we're responsible for the policies, look at them, review them, and, you know, suggest updates if we feel it's necessary.
And I think the one difference for us right now is that all of our policies were updated this past year. So all of our policies have a 2024 date, but if you remember, before we started updating to Press Plus, we had dates that went back to 2000 and 2005. So, you know, we're up to date, as can be for 2024.
Okay. So are there any questions about the policies that are listed? As Brian said, they all have a 24 date. So let's move on to Item C, Board Policies, for our first reading.
So these are our first readings on these policies, and this update comes from the changes to the Title IX regulation. So we had, IASB and Press had anticipated some of the changes coming, and so you already adopted some of those board policies. These were the ones that they didn't, they couldn't make updates because they were waiting for the final Title IX regulations. So these really just are changes with some of the language to reflect the new Title IX regulations.
Great. Do we have any questions about the five policies attached? Okay. Then we will move on to the ed tours. It's just one-
Just real briefly, no questions, but just to clarify, these will come back again. We'll approve them for, or we'll acknowledge them for first reading this month, and then they'll come back again next month. So we have quite a bit of time to review and comment on these over the next couple of months.
Yeah. Thank you. Okay, moving on to Item D, Ed Tours. There is one that we will be taking action on at the board meeting in two weeks, the LHS band to Orlando, Florida, which is a trip they have taken before. Are there any questions about this trip? Okay. Seeing none, then, we will move on to employment of employees. It looks like we've got two new hires. Brian, did you have any comment on the-
We just have a couple of ESP positions that we're still filling, and then some coaching extra for the staff.
Great. Any questions? Okay, seeing none, we have future agenda items listed. Any comments or questions about the future agenda items?
I would like to propose to add one, unless we can resolve it before then, but really to our board meeting, and that is to, for the board to do a self-evaluation and really do a lessons learned on what's gone well, hasn't gone well over the last few years. So we are handing over some nice information for our incoming superintendent and potentially new board members. So I was hoping it would be done by now, but if, that doesn't mean we don't do it. So I don't want to talk about setting that up, but, you know, we couldn't talk about it today. So the next opportunity is our board meeting. October, I think, is too late. So.
Is there any capability within the evaluation system that we currently use for a board self-evaluation to at least get the work started? I know, Brian, you're familiar with the one we use for administrators and-
Yeah, I wasn't in separate things.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I didn't-
We would work with IASB on the board stuff, but we have a specific process.
Yeah, yeah. I didn't think there would be, but I'm just trying to think of a way to streamline, to get it going quicker.
Okay, anything else?
I have something I want to hear more about, and I actually mentioned it to Dr. K earlier this week, which is just, I think, like a general update on how our systems of support are working for our students. Now we're about a month into our new school year. This is when, I think, Dr. K mentioned, we're really starting to see kids make use of those systems and referrals coming to various support staff to engage students within those systems. And so I would love to see an update on how's it going very generally, and then maybe also just a hiring update, where we're at, what we need, if we're at adequate numbers for our current systems in place. Thank you. Anything else?
I do. I mean, I want to follow up. So I guess I'm wondering if anybody else has, I mean, I know I have an interest in meeting together as a board so that we can do some kind of self-reflection, lessons learned, and the amount of work that we've done in the last couple of years. So is there other desire to go through that? I think it's important to know where we were and how we got here and kind of do our own reflection on what our role is, to make sure that we are prepared for our next superintendent.
Yeah, I think it would be helpful because it would also serve as criteria for the next superintendent coming in, right? What do we want to look at in there? So it would be helpful input. We can get that done quickly.
I think that's the best practice, absolutely. And I know we've discussed self-evaluation in the past, and I agree completely.
You know, I mean, we have a whole governance handbook and protocols and procedures, I think, you know, just to kind of go through that and make sure that what we are doing applies.
Yeah, it's always good to reflect. I just, I am concerned about the timing of some things coming up, and we have, we have a couple of large tasks ahead of us as a group. So that would be the main concern, is just the window of time to get that done within.
Well, I guess I see this as a priority, but I don't know if anybody else does. So I would see this, our part of this conversation is a priority.
I think it's a priority because of the task coming up, because this serves as input to those tasks. So we need to get it done before that process starts.
Yep. I know we can't discuss the topic here because it's not on the agenda, so I'm just asking that we add it to the next agenda, and we discuss in it what our scope is, when we will do it, who needs to be at the table, and kind of let's figure out how to get that going when we meet. The next, the next opportunity we have is the September 23rd board meeting.
Great. Anything else?
Okay, then I will adjourn the P&amp;P meeting and turn it over to Jim for the FNF.
Okay, we'll call the Facilities and Finance Committee to order at 6:01. Invitation for public comment. Anyone want to address the Facilities and Finance Committee? Going once, going twice. Okay, thank you. Couple of- Couple of agenda items here, we'll go right through them. The summer 2024 capital projects update.
Just a similar report to what we had at the previous meeting, just updated with current info. So if you have any questions, we're happy to entertain, but the info is included in the report.
The report's in the, in the agenda for the board members. A second item is the employee compensation report.
Yeah, this is an annual report that has to be presented at a board meeting. And so you don't have to vote on it because it just kind of is what it is, but I try not to, if I can't help it, let you see something before it's going to come to a board meeting. So that's what it is here. It is a little odd at times, there's some information that's included for some of our staff, not all information is included for all of our staff. That's an ISB decision, but we have to report it as ISB requires us to. So that's the information there. You'll see this information also presented at the September board meeting. By law, it has to be presented to a board before October 1st and then it gets posted on our website, things like that.
Okay. Any questions or comments on that? Okay. This will be the fastest Facilities and Finance Committee meeting in, on record. We do have some future agenda items. Anyone have anything to add to the F and F agenda for the future? I see a lot of shaking heads. No? Okay. Then we will adjourn the meeting at 6:03ish. It's two minutes. Okay. And we can go directly into the, the other one scheduled at six.
Special board meeting is scheduled at six. Well done.
Okay.
Okay. We will call to order a special Board of Education meeting for Community High School, District 128. It is 6:03 PM. Can we have a roll call, please?
Jim Batson.
Here.
Kara Benjamin.
Here.
Dan Carmichael. Cara Drumke.
Here.
Lisa Hessel.
Here.
Middleish Cotwell.
Your.
Sonalko Carney.
Here.
Okay. We note six of our seven members present. At this time, I'd like to extend an invitation for public comment. Would anybody like to address the board? Okay. Seeing none. I'm going to review the agenda quickly. We have an item for action. It will be regarding the approval of bids for the LHS cafeteria renovation project. Following that, we will have a presentation from our two search firm finalists. I will note that if we get to a certain time, we're going to pause the LHS cafeteria conversation so that our guests, the search firm finalists, don't have to wait for us to conclude. So we may pause item A, item three A, go into item four A, and then resume item three A before we take action. It just depends on how long our discussion about the LHS cafeteria project takes. We will have an executive session to discuss collective negotiating matters under Illinois School Code 5 ILCS 120 slash 2C2. Then we will reconvene an open session and adjourn. So at this time, I am going to turn it over to probably Dan to discuss the LHS cafeteria project bids.
Yeah, we, I was reflecting, it's hard to believe that a year ago, we presented the first conceptual design to the board in this very room. And here we are with the final bids and final information ready for you. So we also invited our LHS principal, Ray Albin, who has been with, part of this project from day one. So we received the bids. There's a lot of information in terms of the bids and the numbers. But what you have before you is an RTA, which is a recommendation to approve a particular amount of bids for the cafeteria project. So what I wanted to do was just walk through briefly what the bids were. So the bids went out in one, two, three, four, five, six, seven different packages with alternates. And the base was, would have been the cafeteria. And then as discussed in previous meetings, the quad bathrooms that are in the other part of the building was put as an alternate. The stairs were put in an alternate and then a few other add-ons to the stairs. So planters was something that we talked about. Updated, upgraded finishes was also something we talked about. Another thing that was done was separating out some HVAC work. So the, one of the packages for HVAC work was bid separate and then a second HVAC work was bid separate. At this time, what we're recommending is, for approval is really what's written in the reports, that it's the LHS cafeteria bathrooms with the base bid. The alternate three A for the cafeteria HVAC, that, that's, that's essential because that's tied into the, to the, to the courtyard that's being encapsulated. We need to do the HVAC that's on those walls because they're designed to take in air from the outside and that outside will no longer be available. The quad bathrooms, we believe is a very reasonable price to do. It's cheaper than what we did a couple summers ago to do those in terms of a per bathroom cost. And then the learning stairs is included in the recommendation. It ended up being very similar to what we estimated, even maybe a little bit less depending on how you look at it. The total cost for all of this, in terms of everything that we've looked at is 17.9 million, just on, just under 18 million. That includes all trades, design costs, everything, everything all in. The, what we're also recommending is including of alternate three B, that is HVAC work. That, that is not necessarily directly tied to this project. That was something Mark wanted to add because HVAC at LHS has been something that's on our, a multi-year cycle for replacing in this building. There's, there's a lot of HVAC in this building that needs to get replaced and so we're on a multi-year cycle. His idea was the rooms that are right near what they're doing upstairs for that project, if they could just do a few more rooms that save on the economies of scale. And so he felt that that was a good price. That wouldn't be charged toward this project. That would be, we would pay that of next year's summer capital. So you'll see that line, you'll see that very specific number tied exactly on that summer capital. So I'm, I'm not counting that in terms of the cost of this project. It does have to, however, have to be one of the bids that you approve because it's connected with the public bids. And so whenever you get bids, you either have the option of accepting them or rejecting them, but you have to, you have to respond to once you open those bids. Yeah, that's the overall picture. I've got information here in terms of history and of overview of the bids and, and timeline and things like that.
Does anybody have any questions, clarifying questions about the information that was provided before we discuss our opinions?
I just want to clarify, three B was work that we were planning to do, but in order to get the economies of sale, we, scale, we bid it along with this other bid package in order to get a better price, but it'll still flow through the same financing of capital projects for next summer. So we would have done this anyway.
We, we would have done this, the question of just would have been, when would we have done those four rooms? Would it have been next summer or maybe the summer after that? Because the, everyone is right there. He felt that that was a good economies of scale to capture that.
Save money by just including it in the bid, but paying for it out of its original.
Correct. And we've done that with other ones. So one that has been a while now, but the LHS pool, we actually also added on afterwards the west parking lot as a, as a, as a development as well. And so that one was part of the bids that were accepted, but that particular cost was pulled out and paid out of separate funds, different set of funds. Our annual budget actually will pay for that three B, alternate three B.
Okay. What other questions do we have before we discuss our opinions?
I have one question and I apologize, I couldn't send this to you before, but in your recommendation document, it says we'll be leaving 600K post-project in that fund balance. Can you talk a little bit about what that means with future projects and such?
Yeah, so we have a fund balance policy that says, you know, our desire is to be no less than 25% of operating, operating funds in our bank account. So let's just use round numbers. If our budget is $100 million, we don't want less than 25 million in the bank by the end of the fiscal year. So that means any amount really you have over 25 million, I'm telling you is available per our policy and we've historically used that for capital projects, to pay cash for capital projects. And so what I'm, what my intention of communicating that part was to say, as we've talked about before, this project is costing more than we thought all along, nearly every step of the way. And, and that's true. And you do have the fund balance to pay for it. And you will then, you will have about 600 and something, whatever I wrote in the, I don't have it in front of me, but yeah, we'll have that, that amount, that number approximate left over after this project is all said and done. Now we have another fiscal year that will run and that might add more. We'll see how the fiscal year runs, but as of right now, that's, that's what would happen. In terms of reminding us about our long-term capital, the, the three major projects that were identified at this point, nearly a year and a half ago, was the LHS cafeteria, the Vernon Hills LST offices, those were done this last summer, and bathroom renovations at this building. So the next thing on our list would be more bathroom renovations. So that's what, that's really what that pot of money could go for, that we could start thinking about and developing once we get this project going.
Thank you. And the funds for just routine maintenance that we have to do, that does not come from this fund balance, or does it?
No. Routine maintenance, everything is built into our annual budget. And we have, we have a pretty substantial, well, that's relative. We have a, we have a, an amount of money that we usually allocate for regular maintenance and replacement of things like HVAC units, like rooftop units, roofs as well, like our summer capitalists that you just, that we just saw in the F and F committee meeting, things like that. Did that answer your question?
Yeah.
Okay.
Any other questions? Okay. So I know everybody's had a chance to read through this and reflect. Does anybody have any thoughts about the recommendations? Okay, I'll start. I am very much in favor of approving the bid for the cafeteria and the quad bathrooms and I am strongly against the learning stairs. I think it's a nice to have. I understand the intention is the impact on perhaps culture more than learning, but I don't think it's fiscally responsible when we're 1.3 million dollars over what we estimated the project to cost. Adding on a 1.3 million dollar nice to have just doesn't have a close enough tie to student, student learning for me. And again, because it's a nice to have. I, I think it sets up some serious questions in the future if we do revisit the idea of a DCEB. I think it makes it a much harder conversation if we spend 1.3 million dollars on something that would be nice to have. And I would be much more comfortable if our fund balance was 1.9 million dollars instead of 600,000. And I know we have budgeted amounts for routine maintenance and life safety issues. I know that we have the required 25% in reserves. I think it would be fiscally responsible to not move forward with the learning stairs. So I, I'm not in favor of including the learning stairs, but I am in favor of approving the cafeteria and the quad bathrooms. Any additional information?
Follow-up question on that. The, it's, it was bid completely as a independent alternate. So excluding that from our fit acceptance would not have any impact on the rest of the project. There's no negative impact on any of the, the other bids or the timing.
If we take that off, will other things cost more?
Other things cost more, take longer, be changed in any way?
I don't think so.
Yeah. I know that's why we bid it as an alternate. You know, I don't, I don't disagree it's a nice to have. I'd like to see it happen, but I'm also nervous about leaving our available fund balance for these kinds of projects at such a low threshold.
Can I, I, I do need to revise my comment. I did mean to include the HVAC work that would be required. So the only thing I'm suggesting that I don't want to approve is the learning stairs.
The learning stair alternate.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah. So I, you know, I, I could go either way, but I, I tend to agree that it'd be nice to have that additional cushion. I know if we wanted to do this later, it's going to cost us more, but I'm also concerned about, this is an old building, once we get into it. If we gotta come up with some extra funding for some issue that we're not aware of at this point in time, I just worry about those types of things. So I, you know, I would, I would support that.
I agree. I, I don't think we have the, the room to do the learning stairs and I, the HVAC seems like has to be done and quad, and bathrooms have been on our list for a long time.
I'm in agreement with the learning stairs being removed from the plan. And to me, it just seems like one of those things that it's a one day, but not today.
Yeah. So it seems like a luxury item.
Yeah.
Any other thoughts? Cause we now have four of our six voting members not in fever of the learning stairs.
I'm disappointed that we can't do it. And I think it was presented as a part of the plan. I'm, I'm mostly disappointed that our numbers were so off from the beginning to now that it is. So I, I hope it stays on the horizon. I'm more concerned that we would have a $600,000 margin for any future projects coming up. I would begrudgingly agree to remove it from the list. I would like more information on what, if this were to be a future project, what would the increase in the cost be if it were to be a single in the future? I mean, how much were we really saving by having the construction done simultaneously with the cafeteria? But if you were asking today, I could see it being eliminated from the bid.
Middleish, did you have any thoughts you wanted to add?
Nothing more to add. I agree with the removal.
I think the only thing I'll add, not to change the decision, but we have to keep that cost where it is. As I've said many times, I'm an HGTV fan and there's always stuff that comes out. Once you open the walls, we have to stay within this number and not go up. Cause when we first started this concept, it was less than 10 million dollars and now we're close to 20 if you were to do everything. So that makes me very nervous that with an old building, it's going to come up with unseen costs. So just please keep that in mind and, and stay with the number that we have and hopefully they've accounted for contingency in, in their bids. Thanks.
How much do you think we've already spent on the design, this, you know, the bid? I know the learning stairs have been designed. So we've already invested some of this, you know, the outset of creating this design. How much would that still be usable if this is a project that we do in the future?
In terms of the design, I think it's extremely usable. Like it's.
Very detailed, but.
It's bid documents. So yeah, I mean, I, I would imagine if you revisited this in the future, correct me if I'm wrong, you probably would start with that design, clarify if there's, needs to be any adjustments to that. And you probably would have a much quicker design, design bid, all those kinds of processes in the future. Is that?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So we're just going to take a brief pause. We're going to revise the motion so that it's reflective of what we're prepared to take action on? Or do you want me just to say the motion?
I was just, I was just wanting to, Cara, you had asked about what would it cost? And I just wanted to try to speak to that if you don't mind.
Sure, please.
So I, I don't know that I could tell you how much more it would cost to do it as a standalone. I know it would be more. I don't know how much more. I mean, when we're, when we've looked at escalation, I feel like escalation was in the probably four or 5% range, just on, just things end up costing more. In terms of design, I'm not totally sure. And in management, something like that, I'm, I'm not sure because we would have to look at that. We wouldn't probably have a management company manage a million dollar project. We would probably go with a general contractor at that stage and dollar for dollar, a general contractor is cheaper than a, a construction manager. That's a much more. That's a much more, uh, I can't think of the right word. Fancy is the word in my head, but that's not what I mean. Much more comprehensive, intensive process. So those are, those are some things in my head. So like, you have the escalation that would cost more. You might have construction management that might cost less in the future. So the real answer to your question is I don't know, but my assumption is it's going to be a bit more.
So our capital, our long-term capital projects plan, we've talked a lot about how often are we revisiting this, and you're rethinking about what your rubric is and discussing what's left. Can we add this learning stairs to that list as you are discussing? Because it might not be important to the seven of us sitting here, or six of us sitting here, but it might change what that rubric is if we're talking about kind of the culture of the building.
I believe that project absolutely should be on that list. And then let that process run itself out in terms of how it scores. I also want to be clear, I'm, I don't, I have not heard from the group that no one cares about this. What I've really heard is just, this is, this is probably not the right way to spend the money right now. That's different. Those are different things. So we absolutely could, we, I think we should add that to the, to that list and let that project be evaluated on its merits. I couldn't predict for you how it would end up on that list, but.
I'd like, yeah, I'd like to see that added to that list as you are thinking about reviewing those items.
Agreed.
I think we're all sitting here with sticker shock. It's been going on for the last four months. I think we're all pretty shocked at what these numbers actually came in at. Well, I know I am. I'm speaking for myself.
But I, I think you're speaking for me as well, when you say you would like the stairs to be added to the capital projects list and have it evaluated through the rubric of the other capital projects that are on that list. Yep. I'm seeing a lot of nodding heads. So do you need a minute to give me a revised motion?
Uh, yeah, maybe let me just talk through it a little bit. So to clarify, we're talking about, the motion would be to approve an RTA that includes the base bids. Alternate.
Alternate one.
Alternate.
One, quad bathrooms.
Yep, alternate one with the, for the quad bathrooms.
Alternate 3A.
For the HVAC.
Alternate 3A for the HVAC.
3B.
And we would definitely recommend the 3B. It's not part of this project, but it's work that we're going to have to do, we would have probably done next summer or the summer after that. So just make sure I'm hearing that right? Base, alt one, alt 3A, alt 3B. Super important for you all to know what you're voting on, so just want to clarify. That's, that's what I'm hearing.
Yes, thank you.
So I got you.
Mm-hmm. That's the trick.
Thank you, Carol. That's the magic question.
Um, I want to double check that math, but I think it's, I think it's 10 million, 803, 508 is the bid. So really with the RTA, remember that's approving the bids that are before you, that's not the project cost, that's the bids that are right in front of you. Um, so I believe that's 10 million, 803, 508. Can I just double check? Can I double check that number?
Yes, please.
Yeah, I think that's correct. It would, I think it's correct. Uh, if I'm slightly wrong on the number, uh, but we know what we mean to approve is the base, alt one, alt 3A and 3B, 10, 10 million, 803, 508. I would have to do probably a double check on the total cost, but my, using these numbers here would give us a total cost of that project at just about 16.3 million.
I'm looking at your memo of September 5th, and on that first page, there's the project scope. And when I add up all the items that you listed, I'm getting 15,239,594.
Can you say again what you're referencing?
So I'm looking at your memo included in the board packet for tonight of September 5th.
Oh, yes.
The first page has project scope.
Mm-hmm.
And I'm using the base bid of 13,853,377.
Yep.
Plus alternate 3A, 366,134. Alternate one for the quad bathrooms, 753,235. And alternate 3B for 266,848.
You would also need to add the one point, that first number in that cell, that's the bathrooms that were part of this project. Those, those are already done, but that's part of the total cost.
Okay. But didn't we already approve those?
You already did approve it. So, so there's, there's two numbers we're talking about. One is, what is the, what is the RTA that you're approving? What are the bids that you're approving right now? And that I'm saying is the 10 million, 803, 508. As an FYI, the, that means then the total cost of the project, as we've discussed that scope, including the bathrooms that are already done, the cafeteria, the HVAC, now that we have a clear idea of what we're talking about, that total cost would be just about 16.3 million.
Okay. And do we have a motion to approve that as listed?
I make a motion to approve the bid, bids, including the base bid for the LHS cafeteria, alternate one for the quad bathrooms, alternate 3A, and alternate 3B for a total amount of 10 million, 803, 508.
Thank you. Can we have a second?
Drunky second.
Thank you. Carol, when you're ready, roll call, please.
Benjamin.
Aye.
Drumpee.
Aye.
Essel.
Aye.
Hotwall.
Aye.
Colcarney.
Aye.
Bethson.
Aye.
Thank you. Motion passes. Okay. Moving on, do we need a quick break before we begin our presentations for these superintendent search firms? Are we ready to roll? Okay. If our guests are ready, then we welcome them to podium.
Nice to see you again. Hi. I'm Lisa.
Nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you. Thank you for coming.
Hey, how are you? Nice to see you. Brian Kelly.
Hi. Carol.
Hi. Nice to see you again. I used to watch you.
Well, we are your BWP team. If we are fortunate enough to get the search with you, we are the ones that would actually conduct the search. So we don't do any bait and switch kind of things with you. Before we quickly introduce ourselves, I wanted to start out with a point that we think is really important. As you probably researched the firms, the search process is fairly similar amongst firms, and it's not really the process that's going to have you trying to decide what's going to work best for you. Here's something that we think is really important. We think that the success of a search is directly proportional to the match that we're able to make between your new leader and the school community. We've seen leaders that are successful in one place, but just not the right match for another, and vice versa. So the key to a search is getting that match right. And the key to getting the match right is for your firm to really know you, know your school community, know your district. And we feel that we bring that to you. With that said, I'd like to introduce our team. I am Joe Porto. I am a retired school superintendent. I had a 33-year career in education. The last 17 of those years were as a superintendent. The last 10 of those years were up in Will Matt, next to Ray. We worked at the exact same time. I was right next door in the district called Aboka, and retired in 2012. Since then, I've been doing a couple of things. I'm a partner now in BWP and Associates doing searches, and I'm also a consultant. And the thing I do, pretty much, my favorite thing to do in the world is facilitating strategic plans. And I had an opportunity to work with you with a strategic plan for your foundation, which was really nice, and also Ed Redd, which you're a member of. So that's me. I'd like to introduce my colleague, my colleagues introduce themselves.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Victoria Stockton. Probably see handsome, recently married, so a little confusion with the name. But this is my 21st year in education. This is my third year as superintendent in Bellwood School District 88, which is probably about 35, 40 minutes from here. So was a really nice drive up today. I stopped in town and had lunch, so I really enjoyed my time up in this area. I'm also an adjunct professor at Concordia University, so I work in the superintendent internship and preparation program. So have lots of experience at the professor level, as well as now in my third year as superintendent. My background is in special education. I started out as a special education teacher in Humble Park, Chicago, Illinois, spent many years doing that, and then I decided to go into administration. So I've served at every level, from assistant principal all the way up to now superintendent. Spent the last 16 years in my district, so I'm homegrown and just excited about this work. I love working with BWP and this amazing team here, so I'm looking forward to learning more about you, as well as what your needs are for this search. And just again, pleasure to be here tonight. Thank you.
Good evening, board. Thank you very much for having us tonight. My name is Phil Erhart. I'm also a partner in the firm. I've been with the firm since 2010 and became a partner in 2015. I came to Illinois via Ohio and Indiana and served in suburban districts in Indianapolis and in Cincinnati. And I came here in 2007, followed my kids, which makes a lot of sense to do, and served as superintendent Benjamin District 25, which is in DuPage County. I then flunked retirement and became the interim superintendent at Evanston Skokie District 65. In addition to that, I also am then executive director of the Midwest Suburban Superintendent's Association, which consists of eight Midwestern states, and there's 10 superintendents by invitation only. I mentioned that in that that gives me a rich pool of candidates already there from all those that I will be able to look at and other networking that I do throughout the Midwest for that also. Board, one of the reasons, and Joe already mentioned is that match, we tried to get our team put together that would match what you need for your district. You'll notice that we have a practicing superintendent, but also two retired superintendents, which gives a good batch on that. We'll talk more about that in a moment. At this time, I'll turn it back over to Victoria, and she'll take that.
So what can you expect from us tonight? So you've already learned a little bit about us, but tonight we'll be able to answer the following questions. You'll learn a little bit about the search process, about BWP and its associates. You'll also learn about how we can customize this search to fit your unique needs. As you can sort of see the theme, we have so many different opportunities and networks that will be able to help us with recruiting talented and a diverse candidate pool. So this is really beneficial. As Phil mentioned, his connections with MSSA, I also work at the university level, so I see a lot of candidates coming up that pipeline as well. So we'll talk a little bit about just, again, our ability to be able to connect with that diverse candidate pool. We'll also talk a lot about the, the process and the timeline that we'll go through, the cost, why BWP? We think that's important for us to be a good fit with you, as, as we sort of mentioned earlier, that it's important that you connect with your new leader and your next leader, but also that you, that you connect with us and that we build that relationship with you all as well. I'll talk a little bit about some of the area and relevant searches that we've engaged in, and then talk about our success. That's very important, that you know our longstanding track record of having successful searches. And, uh, so ultimately, with all that being said, it's really about our goal, is about identifying and presenting a slate of candidates that are going to be well qualified, and I want to underscore that point, because it matters to us that you get someone that is qualified and that's ready to hit the ground running July 1. Also, a diverse candidate pool, as I mentioned earlier, to serve as your next leader. Very, very important. Thank you.
So we're going to jump in now to the meat of the presentation, and I'd just like to offer too, it feels so formal in one way here, so we, we also like it to be a discussion. So feel free to just jump in. If something doesn't make sense, we'd be happy to stop and clarify anything. We like to call ourselves a national firm with local focus, local roots. We formed back in the seventies, the Roots, but we've been a, a firm that focuses in the Chicago suburbs, is kind of our breadbasket. But we are national, and we have, we do searches all throughout the nation. We have a long record of successful searches, over 500. I wanted to just mention our directors. We have nine directors, partners in the firm, and we're really proud of this, you know? Some firms can come up and they'll say, we're going to work hard to find a diverse candidate pool for you. Diversity is so important. We not only will find a diverse candidate pool for you, we're a diverse firm. Of the nine directors in our firm, three are women. Of the nine directors, three are persons of color. And as you can see from the way we construct our team, we like to include the diversity right there in our team. Means something to us, I guess to use the colloquial, we, we actually walk the talk when it comes to diversity. We've had great record, we're very proud. 99% of our placements get through their first contracts, which are usually about three years. 95% are offered a second contract, and we've never, you can Google us, as deep as you'd like to go, you'll never find any kind of lawsuits or any kind of things along those lines. So we're very, very proud of our record. I mentioned in the beginning that a match with you and the candidate is important, but a match for the firm and the board is important. We are very familiar with all of you. We're very familiar with this area, this community, and it matters. We know the climate, we know the culture, we know the values, we know what's important to you. On the left, you'll see some of the searches that we've done in the area. Maybe the most recent powerful one up there is your Fremont District, which we are so proud of, the person that we helped that board find and is doing a great job. On the right.
Oh, thank you. For her.
Oh, please tell her we said so. Um, on the right are some areas, now we're talking about a search, but by doing strategic plans, you get to know the community. It's a deep, rich process. And I felt so fortunate to get to work a little bit with Ed Redd, and Lisa was your representative on that, and in your foundation, which is really nice. So we put this slide in there just to again emphasize that to do a good job with this, it's all about matches. Us with you and you with the candidate. Please, yeah.
I want to just also add that we also, we've done our homework. We, we see that your schools are exemplary, and we know that that's important. We also see that you're undertaking and going through that, that equity, that deep equity work. So again, we utilize all of that information as we're going through the process and looking, looking through our candidate pool to make sure that we present you with the best slate that will help you to, again, identify the candidate that's going to be the right fit for you all.
Thanks. Next slide, I'm going to take you quickly through the five phases. Next slide, I'm going to take you quickly through the five phases of a search process. I'm only going to hit highlights. I don't think we need to belabor this, but I do want to hit a couple of points. Phase one is all about an initial planning meeting that we'll have with you. The day that you inform us we're fortunate enough to get the contract, we will set up a meeting within as quickly amount of time as we can. And that meeting will be strictly to do planning together so that we lay out the search process together. We're all about collaboration. We do everything with the board, and our communication lines are clear. So in that meeting, we'll make decisions together. What kind of search do you want? What's your timeline? We can lay something out. We can expand it. We can contract it. How much stakeholder involvement do you want? It varies quite differently among communities. How aggressively do you want us to market the search? What's going to be the communication plan with the stakeholders and also with the board? And when we say compensation range, we don't mean that you have to have all those details worked out. But the sooner you can give us a range, the better we'll be able to do recruiting. There's two questions that people who are interested in a search ask us in this order. How's the board? Number one. Money is secondary. They want to know how well you work together. And so we'll be able to share that. But number two is, what is at least the range going to be? So we can make sure that this is a good match for us. So those will be what we cover in the planning meeting. And then that leads us to, we all have different opinions. But to me, this is the most important stage of the entire search. We want to develop a unique leadership profile for the next District 128 leader. We don't just use generic, "A good superintendent has this, this, and this." And we don't just hang up an announcement on the job board and hope the right people apply. We tie everything to the unique leadership profile that we will create for you. That leadership profile is going to end up being a document that is maybe eight to 10 bullet points. The successful next leader in District 128 will have these skills and characteristics. How do we develop that? In an engagement, community engagement process. Again, very collaborative. We have three phases, and we put all three, input from all three phases together to create the leadership profile. So the first phase is a one-to-one interview that we'll have with each board member. We'll give you 30 to 40 minutes. We'll call you or Zoom you, however you're comfortable. Each board member will get to chat with us and share your input and views. The second thing we'll do is we'll work with Ray and Becky, and we'll try to set up an engagement day where we can come into the community and meet with focus groups. So we're going to, and again, you can help us identify who you want us to make sure we speak to. But normally, there's groups of teachers, groups of support staff. We want to meet with parents and parent leaders. Of course, the teachers and the teacher association. We want to meet with the administrative team, the cabinet, and non-parent community members as well. So we will come in, we'll meet with those groups. We'll do have a conversation. Usually, those are about 30 minutes to 40 minutes. And then the third piece is the catch-all so that nobody could say, "I didn't have an opportunity to contribute, and I wanted to." Because the third is, we will put together a survey. And we'll work with your tech people to put the survey right up on your website. The only thing we'll ask of Ray and Becky is to help us advertise that so that your parents and your teachers, everybody knows about it. We'll give it a window, and we will have data. Now, what are these conversations? What is this data? It's really simple. We only ask three questions. What is the thing, things that you are most proud of about District 128? The things you'd like to see keep positive and strong? What are some opportunities for growth? Some areas that might need to be looked at? Another way to look at that is when the new superintendent sits down in her or his desk, what's going to be the first things that come forward? And then the third question is, what are the specific characteristics traits that you'd like to see? We put all of that together. We create a written report. We give you all of the results of our research. And then we end that with, "Here's your leadership profile." And then, guys, we use that for everything, right? Go ahead.
The other focus group are the students, too.
If you wouldn't mind, I know there's an obstacle and very little room. But if anybody is-
Thank you.
We want them to be able to hear you online.
Sure. We also will do it for focus groups for the students in both schools as well.
And I was just going to add that this is my favorite part because it really helps us to get to know your staff and your students and your community and get their input because it's important that they have some stakeholdership in this process as well. But also, when we're screening and interviewing candidates, we'll have that in the back of our minds as we're interviewing. Wow, should be a good fit. He'd be a good fit. We'll have that, you know, again, to help us work through that process.
And one last thing before we go to the next slide or take a question. We use that leadership profile as a unifying factor throughout the search. We craft our questions to the candidates based on the leadership profile. We create rubrics where we assess and grade the candidates back to the profile when we meet with you with the candidate slate that we're recommending. We're going to come with sample questions around each of the leadership profiles, and we'll give you a scoring instrument. So we're not just getting to the point of this most important decision and then turning it over to, "So who do you like?" We're going to make sure that this is connected to what's really the match for you.
I did, only because I opened up the floor and said we can be more of a-
I do.
Can we go back one slide?
Sure.
For the phase two, when we talked about the focus groups and you said that you would want to have a mixture of students, parents. What in your experience is the best way to identify those individuals to participate in those different focus groups?
What we try to do is sit down and talk to some of the people who are in the know, like in the central office, like Brian, for example, to start to put together a list of who are the people who are the stakeholders that you think ought to really be involved with the process. The one thing that we do as well of identifying those focus groups, we'll have in the evening, a focus group. We call it's Open for Anybody. Typically, now, we do those both in person. And then we'll have one of us, that's why we have three people. We think it's important to have three so we can really bring this to the table, is we will also do it virtually as well. So people can either get on via Zoom or they can do that also in person as well, either way. The number of focus groups really doesn't make any difference to us. We'll come in here and conduct those. And to make sure, I think Joe made a very good point. When we get through with that process, no one can say, "Well, I didn't have any voice in that." They had the opportunity-
I mean, that's what I want to make sure of.
Either through the focus groups or through the survey to do that as well. In the survey, we want to also emphasize that we'll do that in both English and Spanish. And that survey is done by an outside person who does that for us out of North Carolina. So our fingerprints aren't on that. Neither is the board or the administration or anyone like that. So it really is done in a way that it cannot be. And then we'll provide those results to you and encourage you to put, as Joe mentioned before, the leadership profile and the survey results on the website so people can see, "Oh, my voice was heard through that."
Is there an opportunity when we do that survey? I share your sentiment. I'm very invested in making sure that anybody in our community that wants to participate has the opportunity to do that. Is there a way when we do the survey, the broader survey, does the firm in North Carolina have a way to exclude people who are not in our community? Just in terms of a security measure? As much as I want to cast as big a net as possible, I don't want people who don't live in the community to influence the candidate profile.
We've been asked that. We've also been asked, there's a way to weed out people who maybe do it multiple times to try to skew the results. And we just don't find that it really happens. And if it does, it doesn't really skew the results in any way. We could put something in that tries to keep it within the community, but we really haven't had to do that much. Phil, unless your experience is-
Yeah, I would just add one more thing to it. The issue of trying to limit that is like looking at the IP addresses and that. And if, say, if it's multiple, there will be people who will go to the Libertyville Library and do that, and the IP address will be the same. I had a search not too long ago, and that came up as an issue with it. And we went through and looked at it mathematically. And as Joe just pointed out, it really didn't skew the results one way or another. Because what starts to happen with the survey, with the focus groups and the board interviews, you start to get common themes that come up throughout that. So that really, the security issue on that really is not a big play with that. That's a great question. Thank you.
One more comment to your question, and then-
I was just going to add, too. That's the importance of customizing the process of the focus groups. If you say, "We would like a focus group with students only," we can do that. If you like focus group with, you know, Libertyville High School only, and then we do another one with Vernon Hills. Like, it's truly a partnership.
Or perhaps one just with feeder district parents.
Or with feeder, that's, yep. So we can, once we sit down and have that initial planning meeting, we can sort of iron out all of those details. And I would also say, just to add to what they said as it relates to the survey, that is why we do so many, it's like multiple modalities so that we don't just rely on one set of data to develop and create that profile.
Thank you.
How much time is allocated to this part of the process?
How much time?
What duration?
Usually, we give the survey a two to two-and-a-half week window. We've found that making it any longer doesn't change the number of people. And so we've found two to two-and-a-half window. And then in that window that the survey's going on, that's when we'll do the day in the district. Usually, we can get that done in one day because we can ask some other colleagues of ours to join us if we had multiple groups that we couldn't handle with three. So it's actually a very efficient process. Okay? Also, Lisa, to make you at ease about everybody feeling like they could participate, when we have sessions for the teachers, they don't have to sign up or anything. Any teacher can come. We'll try to put it in a gym or something where as many as they want. Any staff member could come. Every principal will have a group, every cabinet member. The only ones where we have to possibly limit and do by invitation might be the students and parent leaders, maybe. But then, as Phil mentioned, there's always one in the evening that anyone can come to. So I think, I think you're all covered there. Okay? All right. Then we get into, is there?
I think we skipped phase three.
We didn't do three. I was going to say.
There it is.
Yeah.
Next is recruitment. This will be a period of time that we usually devote about a month and a half to two full months. This is when we are out doing everything possible to use Victoria's language, multi-modalities. Of course, we'll post it in Illinois job sites, IASA, AASA nationally. We have organizations of African-American administrators and Latino administrators, and we advertise there. We just throw out a very, very big net. And the, but, the most important thing we're doing is we're also behind the scenes making phone calls because now we have that leadership profile in our hands. And we've got this perfect graphic example of what we're looking for. And then, Victoria, I've got a student in the program who this, this, and this. And Phil remembers somebody from the Midwest. And so we're behind the scenes encouraging the right people to apply. I like to say that the next superintendent of District 128 may not even know he or she wants to be a new superintendent somewhere next year. Sometimes we bring it to them. Then we will pick out the top candidates that match the profile. We'll bring them in for interviews. We'll use the rubric of the leadership profile, and we'll try to narrow that down to somewhere between five and seven candidates. No magic numbers here. We will do background checks to make sure that everything these candidates told us in their interviews and on paper are also true. So we like to get going on some Google searches and social media searches. The last thing we want is to have some candidate we bring to you and have you say, "Hey, I did a Google search. Did you know this person did XYZ?" We'll do that for you. We'll have a very important meeting at this time. We will meet together. It's usually a special closed session meeting. It's going to take about an hour, hour and a half or so. We'll present the candidates to you at this point. We will give you some nitty-gritty facts that you need to know about each so you can start getting to know them. We'll give you their applications so you can start reading up on them. And you'll get to know your slate. The second half of that same meeting, we will talk to you about the interview process, the do's and don'ts, and we'll actually get into deciding what kind of questions you want, how you want to divide those up. So we will not leave that meeting till you're feeling comfortable that you can launch into round one, which would be with the five to seven candidates. Then after you do round one, you're going to try to create finalists. We say two is the ideal number, but we've had as many as four. Don't recommend it. And we've actually had a couple districts that found their person in round one and didn't want to bring anyone else back. So we'll leave that up to you. But it's normally two people. You'll do round two. We'll recommend that you do that in a different way. Lots of districts find success having a dinner, asking the people out, seeing them a little bit on the social end, as well as following up on some questions and so on. At this point, too, and we won't take up any time at this meeting. This would be something in your planning meeting. We'll want to have your decision on whether or not you want any community involvement in this later stages of the search. We like to have the community involvement in the beginning to create. But some searches like to have some community input when they've got things nailed down to their finalists. So we'll ask you, and there's no right or wrong answer to that. And then finally, in phase five, you've made a decision. We'll help you if there's any problems with the contract. We'll help them create a nice transition plan the first 90 days. We will help them get going on relationship building. And one of our special features as a firm is we'll give you one year of free mentoring, no extra charge. We don't want any of the people we place to not have every possible chance of success. Phil's going to wind things up?
I feel like we're dancing up here.
Plus, you have to step over.
Yeah, step over with that. Little agility test there. This is the timeline that we have, which is very general. Phase one would be September. Phase two and three, as Joe went over, would be an October, November phase. And then phases four through five would be in November, December, with holding up in January. In your packet, we've put a timeline in there, and this is just a sample outline. But boards like to say, "Well, what would it look like?" And so what we try to do, if you could pull that out just for a second, I'll walk you through that. In early September, as Joe has mentioned, in Victoria, we'd have a planning session with the board to go over all the logistics of it. In mid-September, we would do, the networking begins, the vacancy notices would be posted. And in mid-September, we would have the application system going online with that. we would have the application system going online with that. In late September would be the community engagement process with the board interviews, the surveys, and then doing the focus groups. We were just suggesting that it could be on October 28, at a board meeting, we would provide the leadership profile, be done at a public board meeting, that it could be posted. Our last day of applications would be on November 4. And then on Page Two, that's when we would begin, as Joe described to you, our assessment process of the candidates. We also put in there, just as a sample, that during the week of November 18, we would have a closed session with the board to do the workshop and provide the information on the candidates. Then there'd be a little lull there because of the triple I conference and the Thanksgiving holiday. And then, starting the week of December Two, would be the first round of interviews. If the board wanted to do an advisory confidential group of people to do that after the finalists are identified, that could be done. Then the week of December at nine would be Round Two. And then, the contract could be finalized starting in mid-December through early January. And as we were looking at your board meeting timeline, you do have a PNP and FNF meeting on January 13. So that might be the time that the new superintendent's contract could be approved at that time. Want to keep in mind, as we've mentioned, we'll customize it how you want it to be wanted, just to give you an idea of what that would look like. Any questions on the timeline? The next would be the fees. Our fees would be $24,500. That includes the surveys that we talked about tonight. The administrative office would be $1,000 to $1,400. That's an estimate. Their advertising is really up to the board on where you want to advertise it. The days are gone where you advertise on paper. It's all done electronically now. But there are some small fees for some of the organizations, while other ones are complimentary. The consultant travel, we're local, and that's included in the administrative and office funds for that. The internet and social media check is about $500. The travel expenses for the candidates, that'll be at the board. And how many are in-state, might be out-of-state, that'll vary with that. So excluding that part of it, our not-to-exceed would be $27,800 for that, to give you the bottom line. Any questions on the cost?
One question. So when I see a not-to-exceed, right, there's always an assumption on certain factors that might still, you know, increase the cost. What have you contemplated into the $27,000 that, or what factors that if we go deeper in certain things, that's going to increase the cost here?
Yeah. The only thing that would really have any impact on it would be the travel from candidates.
Okay.
Who are out of state. And what we try to do is to work with those candidates to come up with the most cost-effective way that's done. We take care of that. We have an actual form that they fill out for reimbursement that we would then give the district, but we're very mindful of making sure that they're flying, obviously at a lower cost, not taking a bus, flying at a lower cost with that. So that's the only real factor in there that could do that as well. And some of the other ones, like the administrative office, it may end up being $1,100. We're just trying to give you an estimate, so you have an idea.
It's a range.
There's no surprises. Right, right. Does that answer your question?
Okay.
The next part is why BWP, and we're on call throughout the search. You'll have our cell phone numbers. We will do a lot of communication with both the board and the district and give you updates, so you know exactly where we are in the process. We will provide a two-year guarantee, which was very important with that. The third one's a critical one, and that's the ethics part of this. We will not place a superintendent in another search during the duration of their contract. We think that's the fair way to do that for a district, so that we don't have a candidate there, and two years later, our firm would then say, hey, do you want to apply for this job? It's probably not as important as some other district, because this is a destination district. There's no question about it. There's not a lot of other places to go, other than a district like this that has both the size and amount of excellence that takes place in here. And as Joe mentioned, we mentor the superintendents with, as part of our fee with that. And we're very, very familiar with your school district and also with your two communities. Did you have a question?
Just help us understand what the two-year guarantee means.
What the?
Your second bullet.
The two-year guarantee?
Yeah, what is that?
Yeah, the two-year guarantee is what Joe had mentioned before, would be that during the initial contract with that, we will not have a guarantee. So let's say after the year or two, the, for some reason, superintendent doesn't work out, we will then come back and do the search at no cost to the district, other than just the cost we would have for us doing our travel with it. We're gonna show you in just a moment, another slide, which I think will show the type of longevity that we have with our superintendents with that.
And I was just gonna underscore that. We won't, we also won't place your superintendent in another search if we're working on another search. We think that's unethical, so we would not engage in that type of.
And then this, we have a very strong record of successful searches. We put in your packet something we just put together for you. We've had some other boards recently ask about this, and it's called the longevity of area superintendents that BWP has placed. And the first half of those approximately are all high school districts, and it tells you how long that they have been in those districts, or they're still employed. And then we listed on the bottom half of the page, other districts that we have done in the area that are elementary districts. And you'll see on there that the longevity is very, very remarkable. We have very few superintendents who, once they go there, don't stay there, which is very important with that as well. We also, and this has been mentioned before, since 2016, we have over 120 unrepresented or women candidates that we have considered for the district to consider. In the past five years, we've placed 37 racially diverse superintendents and 52 women superintendents. And lastly, we're very proud of the fact that we do very extensive and deep communication with the stakeholders and also with the board. Anything else? At this time, we'd like to open up to any other questions that you might have?
I can start. So I see you've hopped higher superintendents in elementary and high school districts. So what do you see as different between these two?
Well, in some ways, we think leadership is leadership. And so, we really focus very, very much so on those leadership characteristics and experiences. On the other hand, experience is also vital as well. So I envision, I agree totally with Phil, that this is a destination district. This is going to attract sitting superintendents. And my understanding, my guess is going to be that people with high school experience, this is like their dream job. So I think a lot of our candidates are gonna have experience as high school teachers. They were high school principals. They may or may not have been assistant superintendents. And I really think that people with a deep, rich high school background are gonna be the ones that show interest here.
Does that answer your question?
Yep. I just have one more, and then I'll stop talking.
Sure.
But you said, you know, you understand, you know, you have some insight into our district. So can you, what's like top, top three to five things that you think, that you know about our district?
I'll do this one. I forgot to mention in my profile, too, that I was interim superintendent in Hawthorne '73 for a year, when they were in between superintendents. So I got to know the community at that point, too. This community has very high expectations. This community expects collaboration. They, I find, I found that they didn't appreciate so much top-down decision-making. They wanted to feel like there was more participation. Your teachers are highly trained, highly skilled, very impressive. And they, too, expect collaboration and a collaborative kind of style of leadership. I think if we brought them anybody who didn't have real examples of success in that style of leadership, they'd be disappointed. Your kids are delightful, and your diversity is really nice. It's not a homogeneous district. You not only have diversity, but your diversity is actually growing a bit. And you're even starting to get some diversity in socioeconomic background as well. And I think that's all really important and really healthy. And I just really enjoyed working with you, with this community when I was in Hawthorne. Phil?
I would just add to that, and Joe alluded to it before, that this district has already had a level of excellence, but it's how to take it to that next level. This district is not looking for, based on what we know about the district and the community and the board, looking for someone who's gonna come in here and dismantle everything and start from scratch and turn everything around. It's a matter of taking it to the next level.
And I'll just add that I'm probably, out of the three of us, don't know as much. I've been doing my own homework. But I'll tell you, I had to take a call today, and I, Joe arranged with your leaders and Carol, for me to use a conference room here today, so I could take my call. And your staff was so welcoming and warm and inviting. And, I mean, just kudos to the team here. Everyone that I engaged with greeted me with a smile, the students. So I really felt good about being here. So I'm excited, you know, and if given the opportunity, I'm excited about the more that I'll learn about, about your district and the community.
Thank you for your warm words about the LHS staff. I agree. We have an exemplary staff. Any other questions? Sure. Thank you very much.
We, we have one for you, if there's a minute left. Just wondering what your timeline is for making the decision about the firms?
So we intend to make a decision at our regular board meeting on September 23rd.
Okay. Thanks.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you for the opportunity tonight. We really appreciate it.
Thank you very much for your time. We appreciate you. Nice to meet you, too.
Currently on break. 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 Currently on break.
Welcome to our guests. We're ready to start whenever you are. Thank you for coming.
Wonderful. Thank you for having us. My name is Gary Zubilka. I am one of the lead partners for Educational Leadership Solutions, and I'm proud to be here tonight. Many of the faces are familiar. Most of it is all for good reason, and appreciate being a part of, of this community, as I've been for many years. Very quick background, some of you may know or remember, I was a protege, if you will, of Hawthorne School District, where I served for over 20 years as a teacher and a principal and administrator. Left there as a principal to become a superintendent, was superintendent for 13 years in two different districts, and then have served the IESA as a field service director, working with superintendents across the state in a variety of capacities. We appreciate you having us here, and we look forward to presenting our firm to you.
All right. Good evening, board members, Dr. Lecter, and members in the audience at home and so forth. I am Cara Coglanese. I'm a member of the team. And I will say, I was so excited when I actually got here, that there were so many cares in the room. So I, I've never been in a room with more than one. So I was really tickled to see some, some other folks in the room. So anyway, I just had to shout out for my, my fellow named folks. I have, I've been in the education for about 35 years. Please do not do the math, but 13 of it has been as a school superintendent. And so I've just highlighted some of the experience I have had. Though you'll see many of these on the South Side, I actually am coming home here because I spent about 20 years in this area. I worked at Kildare School District. I was at Fremont a number of years ago as an assistant superintendent. And then when I had some life changes, I moved to the South Side and got to know the Sox going down there. But being a South starter, I had started off at St. George, which was a one-school district down in Bourbonia, went to Homer 33C, which was an elementary district. And right now, I'm serving as the superintendent at Crete Moni School District, which is a K-12 district. And we've got about 4,600 students there. Some other things about me, I am a certified executive coach. I just finished at Northwestern University. I did a lot of executive coaching with board members, staff members as well, and that's come quite into handy. We noticed right after COVID, a lot of people needed that coaching, life coaching, career coaching, those kinds of things. I am a national and local speaker on various leadership topics. I attend various conferences, the Illinois School Board Association, as well as many other conferences. And I have several publications at the School Board Journal and the School Superintendent Journal as well. And I'm going to turn this over to Dr. Nick.
Thanks, Cara. Good evening, everyone. My name is Nick Poliak. Very proud to be here with you tonight. I've been a superintendent for the past 16 years, the last 12 of which have been at Lyden High School District, right outside O'Hare. Prior to that, I spent four years in Central Illinois, Illinois Valley Central School District as superintendent. But the first 10 years, I was at Lincoln Way High School District as a math teacher and coach and assistant principal and all the things. So I'm also, part of my story is I'm a former school board member. When I was working in the high school district, I was asked to take, to fill a vacancy on the elementary school board where I lived. So I filled two years of that. I ran again, got elected, served two more years, and then I moved to go be my superintendent self. So I've got both perspectives from the superintendent and the board side. The other unique thing I think I bring to the table that I want to highlight is, for the last 10 years, I've been teaching the Illinois Aspiring Superintendent Academy. So every summer, we bring 40 people that want to have these crazy jobs down to Springfield, and we put them through a boot camp. And so during that 10 years, I have a network of 400 people that are either young superintendents in their careers or aspiring to be superintendents. For the last five years, I've been teaching that same class at the national level. So I've got a network of folks across the country that are like-minded. And like Cara said, I, I do a lot of speaking. I've written four books on school leadership. But I think I'm most excited to help you find the person that's going to be the right fit for your community. So a little bit about our firm. Educational Leadership Solutions has a variety of services. Obviously, administrator searches is what we're here to talk about tonight, but we also do a lot of work across the state when it comes to coaching and mentoring school leaders. We do strategic plans with schools and communities, and then we do custom data analysis. And I think that comes down to the unique partners we have across the state of Illinois. So along with Gary, Don White, and Rich Volz across the top are the three founding partners of the firm, but we have representation all across the state of Illinois. So when it comes to recruitment, we tap into those folks in every corner of the state to let them know about the jobs that we have available, and that's what we would do in
As you probably know, there are three phases of doing the superintendent search. The first one is developing that leadership profile. We need to find out the type of superintendent that you're looking for. What are the characteristics? Are you looking for someone who is charismatic, someone who can build culture? Are you looking for someone who's strong in the curriculum areas? You know, what are the strengths that you're looking for? So we will be working to do a survey, as well as perhaps some focus groups, to find out what are the characteristics that will work here in this school district. And then from that, we go about doing the recruiting, the application piece. We screen the candidates, and then we conduct interviews, and we do a thorough vetting process during that time. And then finally, we will present six candidates for you to take a look at, and you will interview them, and then you'll narrow it down to probably two or three for the final interview. So I'm going to go in a little bit more detail about what Phase One looks like. So first, our first meeting was, would be to establish a timeline of details of the search. So kudos to you, you started early, because you could probably wrap this up by December. Superintendent searches take about 10 to 12 weeks, give or take. At this season, as you know, we've got Thanksgiving, we've got the Triple I Conference, and those things will need to be considered, but we can still compact that in before the winter break, if you so choose. So we'll need to determine how, how fast you want to go with that. We want to identify what the board priorities are. Who are you looking for in the superintendent background and so forth? We want to discuss the online survey that we're going to give out, and that, again, really focuses on narrowing down the characteristics of the superintendent you're looking for. And that, that survey goes out to all the stakeholders in your community. It goes out to parents, it goes out to staff members, administrators, and so forth. And then from there, we determine if we need to conduct further focus groups. That is something we always recommend. The survey will give you a good piece of information. The focus groups give you that anecdotal, those stories. The stories really help shape the search to find out those characteristics of what you're looking for on there. From that data, we develop that profile from identifying those groups, and then that helps us better to go out and do the search. We collect that data, and, and then we develop something called a Community Engagement Report, which basically compiles all that for you. And then we develop that superintendent profile that is then presented to you at a board meeting before we start doing the candidates. Phase two, development of that candidate pool. We do post on the IESA Job Bank and the EDLS website. This is mostly local, but we have the ability to do a national search, if you would like, as well. We do a lot with the social media, press releases, and organizational networking. Obviously, we all attend lots of conferences, and when we're out there speaking, we have a lot of networks that we pull from, and we know people that have a lot of great characteristics. And so we would also start looking to see what would make the best fit for here. We'll put together a brochure, and then it's also our own personal recruiting as we go out there. Then there's that application process. The profile has been developed, and then we use that for the screening process. If we know you're looking for someone that's got experience, someone who's got longevity in their background, somebody who's a good, good communicator, somebody can build culture, that's what we're going to look for. And we're going to start narrowing down those questions and those focus groups to, to support that. Candidates are then carefully vetted, and then credentials checked. We do a very thorough job. We look at their application process, we look at their social media connections to make sure that we find you the most reputable candidate that is out there. And then again, that slate is then presented to you in closed session. And then Nick will take on number three, Phase Three.
Sure. Every search is different. We're going to customize this the way it makes the most sense for you, the way you want to take this. So a huge part of our job, like Cara said, is to vet candidates and bring you a slate of viable folks. Once we get there, we're going to reengage with you based on what we've learned through the focus groups, through the survey, through our conversations with you, and help you build the questions that are going to get to those things that you want in a leader. So we don't want to give you a canned list of questions. We want to use the data we gather and build the questions with you that are going to make the most sense. So you can have a first round of interviews, you can narrow it down to usually three finalists that you're going to bring back for final round. We'll work with you on some, some options. One of the unique things about our firm is a very deep use of data. And so if you would like, we will marry those characteristics that you're looking for to the questions, so that you can individually rate the candidates' responses, and we'll create radar diagram results. So you can visually see who's the best match, based on their responses as scored by you. We can also do plus delta reports, and really, like I said, it'll be custom, based on what you would like it to be. Once you get down to these roles of interviewing first round and second round, we're going to talk to you about whether you want to engage stakeholders in those processes. So is there going to be two different rooms, one with board members and one with teachers or community members? Is it going to be the board themselves conducting these interviews? We'll have that conversation and pros and cons with you to pick the pathway. But then we will, we'll help you go through to narrow that down to your finalists, to have that final round interview, so that you can bounce ideas off of us. But really, there comes a point, then, where we can provide you the data, we can provide you the question sets, but you're going to get to the point where you need to make a decision. You know, and it's, we're still along with you, but then you start to engage with your school attorney. And so you've got someone that you've found, you think they're the right fit. Now your attorney is going to engage to help you with the contract negotiations, they're going to go through all those pieces with you, they're going to work with usually the, the state association's attorney who works with superintendent candidates, and you're going to go through that together to make that, that final package and get to the solution. But here's where some of the things I think we do are a little bit unique. Once you find that person, we are telling you, we are going to coach or mentor that person, if you'd like, for a year, as part of the engagement with us. So if it's an experienced superintendent, we'll offer coaching support. If it's a brand-new superintendent, we'll offer mentoring support. We give you a two-year guarantee of placement. And so the person that you select and hire, if they're not here for two years, we're going to come back and do the search again for you, at, at no cost. The other thing we say is, we commit to not recruiting your candidate. So once you hire that superintendent, we're not going to be calling that person about the job we have down the road, the job we have downstate, we will, we'll stay away. And so those are some of the things we promise, that I think set us apart a little bit.
The process, again, will be customized to meet your needs. We're estimating between 10 or 12 weeks, give or take. This is a very confidential process. We ask that, you know, the candidates remain confidential as far as making sure that, because sometimes if they're looking for another job, they don't want to put their current job into jeopardy, so we want to make sure that we ensure that process. The selection of the candidates will be aligned to the data that you will see. And our project team is the four of us that you see there. Whoops, whoops, whoops. And of course, the big question is the cost of this, right? So you'll see at the bottom there, it is $17.9 for these things. So what does that include at the top? It requires that online survey, which has all the stakeholders in that. It has a focus group, if you'd like. It develops a superintendent profile, the recruitment, the advertising, the application process, the candidate screenings, interviews and vettings, data analysis, and the board guidance through the process. And again, that complimentary piece there is that coaching and mentoring for the selected candidate. Travel expenses are billed a little bit separately, but that's not to exceed $1,000, and that's if we were coming up doing a lot of focus groups at that time. Additional expenses, if you're interested in doing a national search, that can vary anywhere between $700 and $1,400. So we just want to be transparent on that.
Sure. Yeah, and we mentioned this already, but that additional service we provide, we want to make sure that you not only get the right person, but that person sticks. And so we're offering to come alongside and mentor or coach that person for a year. And I think that's a unique set apart for our firm. When we think about what we do, why we're here talking to you tonight, we're committed to excellence. We want to work with you until you're satisfied with the solution. We want to get you the right person that you're going to be happy with. And like we said, if that, that person doesn't stick for two years, we'll come back and do it again for free, just to make sure that you're getting the right person. And so really, I think you'll see a lot of similarities when you talk to search firms. And so there are a couple ways we, we distinguish ourselves. But at the end of the day, this is your community and your school district, and so we want to partner with you and come alongside you in that.
A question?
Thank you for your presentation. Doctors Zubilka, I know that you know our district, but I'm curious to hear, because you're going to be on the team as well, could the two of you sort of tell us what you know about District 128?
Sure. Well, I know that--
I'm sorry.
Oh, well, they know, I'm sorry. I was going to say, my goodness.
Yeah, I, I'm confident that you're familiar with the district, but I would love to hear what the two of you know about us. Just from working up here, even then, when I was in Fremont, I know this district had very high standards, and it was very well-known for the academic work that you had done here. And I know your strategic plan is strong for some of the work that you're doing, so I think you need, or definitely are going to be-- I think you need, or definitely are going to be looking for a superintendent that has got that strong background to really lead this district forward. So looking forward to that.
Yeah. My, my experience has always been in high school districts, so I'm very familiar. I know that these are two of the top-ranked high schools, not only in the state but in the nation. And so there's a strong academic excellence, a lot of community pride. When I mentioned the aspiring superintendent work, Pete Hannigan was one of our students through that program, still close with Pete. And Rebecca Jenkins and her husband are good friends of my wife and I, so we're actually going to Topgolf with them next week. So we talked quite a bit about, about this. And then you've got Jim McKay, who's interim, interimming in one of your feeder districts. I've been on two mission trips with Jim over to the Dominican. So we talk a lot about our different jobs and communities. I think I'm pretty familiar.
May I say something?
Yes, of course. I did not mean to exclude you.
Just to compliment their answers, just wanted to say that there are many quality, qualified superintendents out in superintendentdom, if you will. And one of the things that I think we can bring that's very unique is that we are more familiar with this area, we're more familiar with the people in this area. Your situation is one that you're looking for someone that will just be an ideal fit for where you are as a district today. There's obviously some healing that needs to take place, there's obviously some moving forward that needs to take place. And those things may not come through, those are some of your less tangible things that you'll see in candidates. But I can assure you, one of the things that our firm is proud about is that we've got successful people who understand those intangible aspects in addition to those tangible aspects that can help identify who are those people who have the best fit. Like I said, there are many quality people out there, there will be many people applying for this job because this is such an attractive district, again, not only in the state but in the entire country. But at the same time, we all know the uniqueness of Libertyville, Vernon Hills area. And we know what you've gone through, and as such, it's going to take, to use a term that Nick used earlier, a marrying of those skills that this person has along with your district to be able to provide that kind of support and service for this district moving forward.
Thank you, I appreciate that. You provided an excellent segue. I have another question, and then I'm going to certainly let everybody else jump in. You talked about healing, and one of the things that is very important to me is the community engagement piece. And that's not something we got to hear a lot about, your experience and skills in facilitating the community engagement piece beyond the survey. And I would love to hear you talk a little bit more about that.
Sure. You guys mind if I jump in?
Go ahead and then we can finish off.
First of all, I'll share some of the experiences that I've been a part of. I would say most recently, but even that was about five years ago, was involved in the Highland Park Deerfield search, where they were looking for their next superintendent. They had numerous challenges in that district. And basically, my colleagues and I went there and participated in as many representative groups that the board felt was necessary to have been heard in order to give people the opportunity to share what they're thinking, as well as what their thoughts are regarding what the next candidate is going to need to bring. And I think that's one form of healing, if you will, is giving people that outlet to be able to do that. So in that group, we're looking at not only community members, we're looking at staff members, we're looking at board members. Those are only three of the groups, but the administration in general, you've got a large administration. It's been a fairly traumatic experience, I believe, probably for most groups, and even community people at large, that we would provide the opportunities for them to come out. Now, interestingly enough, this day and age, well, we did see in some of your board meetings, people will come out if they feel the urgency to come out, yet at the same time, we also provide a survey that if they don't want to come out, they still want to share their input. One of the things that we feel that we provide better than any of the other firms out there is that data piece, where not only can we collect the data, but then we could disaggregate it by the different groups and so on, and hear what the different groups are saying. And all that's to be said, that that would be shared with the board, here's what we're hearing from the various people in the focus groups. So to that end, please, Kara and Nick, feel free to jump in.
I can just jump in. When I've done focus groups before, it's really important, I think, to listen and hear their stories. And we start off with the candid questions, and that takes a few times for people to warm up, but people do share their stories. And I think those stories is where we start listening for the nuances of the characteristics that we're looking for. And then from that, we can pull out data, and we usually can find some really strong trends, and then we can triangulate that with the various groups. When we do with staff, we're looking at certified and non-certifieds as well, as well as administration, certainly communities, which would be anybody from businesses, beyond parents as well. And sometimes we can even ask the students. I know we've done focus groups with our students, and they have a very, especially at the high school level, they have a very mature attitude about their experiences and what they want from a superintendent. And sometimes we find that really interesting to layer that in as well. So again, just listening to the stories helps us pull in the data, it helps support what we're seeing for the, the hard data, so to speak, and it gives a good story.
Yeah, I was going to comment also on kind of incorporating student voice to the degree you're comfortable with it. But when I said earlier that every search looks different, we've done searches where the board in this, in that particular community said, we want to do the survey, and then we're going to do the interviews, and that's it. It was very simple and very small. We've done searches where we've done big community groups, we've had community panels in the interview teams and aggregating scores of ratings of candidates. So it's going to be through that conversation that we determine what the best fit is for you in the way you want to do this. But I always tell people, when you think about being a superintendent, I'm the captain of my ship, I'm steering my ship of my school district, but I don't own the ship, it's not mine. It belongs to the community. And so the community deserves to have a voice in how this all plays out. And so I think it would be incumbent upon us to have that conversation as to what that looks like in its best version here.
So if we were to hypothetically say that I think we all want stakeholder input at that Phase One, you know, whether it's through focus groups, how many, what, I know you answered what it could look like, but knowing that that's an important part of our puzzle, how many, how would you see yourselves doing the focus group? And more importantly, how would that affect? I know you had up to $1,000, but knowing that getting all the different stakeholders' opinions is important, what would that do to our bottom line dollars-wise? It says travel expenses are billed separately, and I thought, Kara, you had said that's if you had to come back and do a lot of focus.
A lot of it's just gas, it's gas.
No, I understand.
It wouldn't be.
Add that $1,000, and there's no, is there a limit to how many focus groups you would be, or what that would look like? Okay. And I have one more question. Is that okay? Because I know you're jumping in.
No, I mean, I had a question on that same slide, because right now, the way I read it, it says focus groups if desired.
Yeah.
We are already indicating that there's a desire.
Sounds like it.
Right? So I just wanted to reconfirm that, you know, if we do three, four different focus groups where we are getting the voice of the community, students, staff, does that change how you price this? And if it does, we would like to know what's the impact.
Can I just add, before you proceed, is also the community input on the backend of it, which is making them part of the interview process? Same question, but front end and back end.
Sure. I'll speak first to the cost of the focus groups. That is included in our price that we had given. Again, the expense cost is primarily just the travel piece, okay? So we'll come out numerous times, and that, you know, doesn't make a difference. What we do is we try to be as practical as we can. Obviously, parents and/or community members would be in the evening, and you've got two different schools, probably have a set of them at Vernon Hills High School, a set over at Libertyville High School, have an evening where they can come in. If they can't come to that evening, then maybe have a third night, if you will, for anyone who couldn't make any of the previous nights from either of the schools, so that we make the opportunities available to them. Staff we could oftentimes meet with right before school, right after school, kind of situation. There too, because you've got so many staff, we typically, and again, depending upon the culture of your district, oftentimes work with the union, to say to the union, bring us a, a group of representative staff members from Vernon Hills High School, we'll meet them there at a certain time. Bring us a representative group from Libertyville High School, we'll meet them here at a specific time. And we do it by groups because most of them talk together, and they know what the issues are regardless. And then other people who may not be a part of those groups, again, have the opportunity through the survey to participate, so that everyone does get a chance to participate in some way, shape, or form. I hope that's a little bit more specific for you. But the number of groups that we've just mentioned there are not too many groups.
I was excited to hear you say that we're starting early because we've been, I've been feeling like we've been starting late. You know, the message to us is that we've been starting late, that we're kind of late in the game. So what would you think is the deadline for us to still have access to those top candidates to make a decision to start the ball rolling? When do we need to do that?
You can address that or I can.
Yeah, I'm going to say, you're jumping right into that first cycle. You're a little bit on the backside of starting it, but everyone else has their applications open right now. So right now, they're just receiving applications. You know, depending upon who you hire, we could have applications available and this position posted next week. And then you're right in the swing of things with applications being posted. People know District 128 is open, it's no secret. And so they're just waiting for it. You will get the quality candidates that you would like to see for this position. You know, are you a little bit later than some? Some boards actually hired their firms last spring, but they didn't launch the searches until this fall. So it's the fall, it's early fall, it's still early September, you're, you're fine.
Yeah, usually when people are looking to make a change, the fall is the time that people start looking, so.
I would say, customarily, if you're offering a job to somebody in late November or December, even if you figure it all out, get the contract settled by January, that's still the first wave.
Yeah.
So I had sort of a follow-up. In, our community expects a certain amount of transparency. I think we've gotten a lot of concern about that in our processes. So how do you approach this? This is a confidential search. You don't, you're not exposing names and people's information until you've made your final decision. So I understand the community can be certainly involved in developing a profile, that type of thing, but how do you address, as we move forward in the other phases, keeping the community at least apprised of what's going on without exposing too much information, without them feeling that we're hiding something?
I think it's really important, when you partner with your community, that you are sharing with them through your social media, through press releases, everything that is going on. So immediately after you make your decision is letting them know, hey, we're starting on the search, because they're going to want to know, you know, things are getting, getting moving, right? So, you know, putting that out as a press release, putting it out on social media, and then keeping them involved frequently through those mediums to invite them to engage. And then they're part of the process, I think. So that is what has worked well in many districts.
The process is confidential, but it is transparent. Okay, I think therein lies the key. So for example, once we have developed the leadership profile based on all the input from the various groups, we come to a public board meeting and we share, here's what everybody said, here's what the profile looks like. Does the board find this acceptable, you know, as what they believe is necessarily required, you know, for their next superintendent to, you know, to have characteristically? That being the case, again, we make a big deal of saying, this is public information. And then we take it off the board shoulders, say that there are aspects of this that do need to be confidential so that we can recruit the best possible candidates for this district. Because if it becomes too open, then people are not going to be interested in this because they're taking a risk of leaving a quality district, because you're going to want to hire somebody from a quality district for a quality district versus somebody from a district that nobody would care if their superintendent left. You wouldn't get one of those candidates. So, so therein lies the difference. But again, we as your partner and team to work with kind of help dissuade some of that conversation that we're not being, we're being as transparent as we can where it's important, and we're also being as confidential as we can because that's important. There's that difference.
One other quick question. Talking about the gathering of data, and we talked about a survey, surveying the community. One of the concerns that I know some people have is the ability to sort of maintain the integrity of that data. And I know you guys do a lot of things with, with data. So are there any processes, or do you think it's even an issue in terms of certain individuals maybe trying to, you know, misrepresent data, vote early and often, you know, that type of thing with the, with the survey data that you gather? Is there any concern with that? And/or do you have any, any processes that try to address that?
We always have concern with that because that's the nature of our world today, unfortunately. We did a search last spring where we identified too many like responses coming in within certain periods of time, within minutes of each other, consistent answers and responses. And we believe that we've got one of the best data people. You'll never meet or see Dr. White, he never comes out.
He exists, I tell you.
He is our, he's our data person, and he's trained in identifying those things, and he was the one that was able to identify that breach, if you will, in that search. And basically, we addressed it with the board, and for the most part, the search went on, and we negated the bad information, if you will, and felt that we had great data to go on beyond that. So, so we're attuned to that, and we've been, knock on wood, fortunate so far.
But I think that's where the focus groups come in, because if you're hearing one thing with the stories, and it's not matching your data, that's a tip-off, you know, for us. So I think that's why they're so important.
I have a quick question. I don't know if you have this information on hand, but you can certainly speak to it more broadly. I'm just interested in your history of success with placing superintendents and them having, you know, fruitful long careers within their respective districts. So I don't know if you, you can speak to that with any percentage or even just a wild guess, but just would love to hear more about that.
Sure. We're a small firm, first of all, and I'll say that as a firm, we've only been together for five years. I can tell you from my previous life in another firm, I mentioned a couple of districts. Highland Park Deerfield did that search, that superintendent retired from there. District 211, which is the big, one of the two big ones in the state, if you will, did that search, that superintendent is retiring this year. So those were longevity positions. Did the search for Zion Benton Township High School. I'm only mentioning high schools at this point, not to mention the elementary districts, but that one is retiring. The current superintendent in Lake Bluff, we've done that search. Current superintendent in Kenilworth, we did that search. Those are the ones that come from mine. I know in our references, we, we list many others that we've been involved in, either individually or collectively. But at the same time, the point being that, you know, we do have the ability to spot quality candidates and, for quality districts. And as such, I think there's, there's a difference there as well, quality candidates for quality districts, because yours is a very good quality district, and you deserve nothing but the best candidates here.
Thank you. What other questions do we have? Do you have any questions for us?
I think there may have been one question that we didn't respond to from Ms. Sal, if you will, and that is, in the interviewing stage involving stakeholders, and we typically do recommend that in addition, once the board is down to the final two or three candidates, that we do have a stakeholder committee that also interviews those candidates. And that's also where the process is confidential, where those people who are involved in those interviews have to sign a statement that they will not share who the candidates are that they interviewed, so that the board could then get input from people other than the board members. And it's a select group, typically a group of about 15 or so, that's comprised of some staff members, some administrative... That's comprised of some staff members, some administrators, some parents and some community members, and even some students. And in a district the size of yours, maybe we'd have two of those stakeholder groups, if you will. But at the same time, to give you that opportunity, it's still the board's decision as to who gets offered the position, but you could do so along with information that you will have gotten from these focus, uh, the stakeholder groups. That's also part of it. Obviously, you can't have everybody, your whole community would love to be involved in that process. When they see what's involved, they may not want to be that involved in the process, only because there is a time commitment, because we ask the same people to be involved in the interviewing of the candidates so that we get like data, if you will. And as such, um, that's, uh, a thing that we do then as well to ensure that there's not only that community engagement participation part, but that the board is also hearing from the constituents, if you will, so that they can make their best decision.
So I did have a question on that. I think good answer. The one question I had is that you mentioned selection of those stakeholder groups. How do you go about selecting the right people to bring in? Because there's so many parent groups, there's so many teachers, there's so many students. How, how do you pick?
It's a great question, and that's where we work closely. We really become partners with you and that we have those conversations with, um, your team, if you will, that we will work closely with to say what groups are out there. Let us know, who are those primary groups that you would like to hear from? And then how best can we select from that group? So we work with you, we get your input. You know your community best. You know, we hear and know it from a periphery, if you will. You know your community best. We count rely on you to say, how best can we reach and get those people that you'd like to have involved, involved in this process?
When you say our team, do you mean the board or do you mean the district in building leadership teams?
Typically, the board team.
Yeah. We usually work with a representative from the board who can, is able to have those conversations. When, when we think about building those stakeholder groups for interviews, there's critical mass. You don't want to have 100 people in the room, because it's not going to be functional. And so it's more about representation. Who needs a seat at the table? How do we work with them to figure out who's going to be their best representative so that we get a viable group of, you know, eight to 10 folks that can actually conduct an interview?
We want it organized, not chaos.
Exactly.
Exactly.
Any other questions from the board? Any other questions from our guests?
No, thank you. Again, we just, on behalf of Ed Leadership Solutions, we just want to say thank you for including us. We know that there are many search firms. We know you only talked to a couple of them tonight. Uh, we appreciate that opportunity greatly, and, um, we hope we may have the opportunity to work with you in the future.
Great. We're going to make that decision at our September 23rd board meeting. So you'll hear from us either that night or the next day.
Wonderful. Thank you. And if there's any other information you need from us, don't hesitate.
I just thought, one, just to, right before you. If there's a district that you're currently kind of supporting a search on for us to look and see how you're disseminating information to the stakeholders, is there an example that we could look at online of just how you're working with other districts?
We've got one just starting underway, um, down south. Uh, we've got a couple that we did this spring. Who best can I share that information with? Maybe Dr. Lekner?
Yeah. Thank you.
Great. Thank you so much for coming and for your time. Thanks to all of you. Nice meeting you.
Thanks for having us.
Nice seeing you all again.
Thank you.
Bye-bye.
Okay. At this time, uh, we are looking for a motion to convene in closed session to discuss collective negotiating matters under Illinois School Code, Code 5 ILCS 120 slash 2C2.
Benjamin, so moved.
Thank you.
Batson, second.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Drumkey.
Aye.
Hessel.[1785.38]